I would like to call July 14, 2022, regular board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Our invocation will be conducted by Tucker Green and our pledge of allegiance will be conducted by Steve Smith. Would you please rise out of your seat?
Joel, me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us, Lord. We thank you for this great community, this great school system and staff and students that make up our Pickens County School family, Lord. We ask that you be with all of us, all the homes here, be with all our faculty and staff and students and keep their families safe, keep our district safe throughout the school year as we begin the process to starting that in a few weeks. And lots of great learning and things go on within our school buildings. All these blessings we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the vote is 5-0 and the agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is recognitions and that will be conducted by Janet Goodman.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you, Dr. Goodman?
Great, thank you. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Good. I know I gave an update last month. We were just two weeks into summer camp and the last two weeks got even better. You can believe it, I think you did. We did run surveys for the students, which those were papers. They're taking a little longer for us to go through, but so far, super positive. We sent out a survey to all parents and all staff and we just want to, we think pictures will tell a thousand words, so we're just going to give you a little five-minute video and then we have a couple of recognitions. Okay?
Thank you.
I think it pulls up.
Is it musical?
Yes.
So, before I get to the recognitions, we definitely, obviously, we are a school system and teaching and learning is number one, and we wanted to make it fun and hands-on for kids. But we will be tracking throughout the school year. We took attendance every single day and figured out which kids were there all four weeks, three weeks, people had vacations and different things, and we will be looking at throughout the school year, any changes in their attendance, their discipline, their academics, and hopefully we can tie that back and make sure that we can support even more children next year. And that's what we're working on with the surveys. We asked people what they thought about the structure, the timeframes and all those different things. So, we're going to take a look at all that and hopefully be ready to roll out it even, as Mr. Young stated, even bigger and better next year. So, that's our plan. I also want to thank, we tried to get everybody in pictures. We didn't get all of us, but all of the central office administration who came out to help us every day, the school administration who came out to help us every day, the bus drivers, the sheriff's department was there making sure we were safe every day. And specifically, we want to point out, we had Ms. Gail Smith there as a nurse. We had a student nurse from Piedmont, or Reinhardt, sorry, Reinhardt, across the street, and she came in and was a parent volunteer. And we just had so many people supporting us, we could not have done it without them. So, with that being said, we did send out some invites, but some people were on vacations and couldn't make it tonight. We had Whitney Barnes and Kayla Kinsler, social workers. They came in and volunteered their time all day, the whole time they were on contract during June, went out and helped with the farm at Suzette Herman's Farm. Like I said, Lauren Chastain, our parent volunteer. And then finally, we have Julie Herman from our high school. She's going into her sophomore year. If you want to come up, Julie, we have a little recognition for you. And I'm pretty sure that the farm group out there at Suzette Herman's Farm could say that, they probably wouldn't have done nearly as well without Julie's help. She was fantastic there every day. Of course, she lives there, so she was kind of volunteered into that position. But we wanted to give her recognition for that, for Camp Cool the Wild, and also a goat statue, greatest of all time. Okay? But thank you so much. And we also have the certificates for Kayla, Whitney and Lauren, who are not able to be here tonight, and I'll make sure they get those as well, so.
Come on back up, let's do a picture with the goat.
She had no idea she was going to be a goat.
Relax.
Congratulations. And I'm excited, we have her at the high school for the next three years. That's fantastic, too. Hard worker.
Great job. I heard lots of compliments on the cam, so that's great.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is superintendent reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start this evening with our financial update from our CFO, Ms. Amy Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, I always had me following the fun stuff.
Well, you're our goat of CFO.
I've got the stuffed goat to prove it, too. We'll review our financial information through the end of June. For our general fund, we have collected 96.57% of our budgeted revenue for general fund and expended 93.47% of our budget. Keep in mind, at this point, there are certain ad loren taxes and outstanding grants that we're still waiting for that revenue to come in. The taxes we're allowed to collect through, actually, we're not allowed, we're required to collect through July and August, so this year-end report will not be completed until into September, which I'll bring it back to you at that time. I'll keep updating you, but I'll bring it back for a final looksee by the board. We also still have quite a few invoices. You can see on the bottom section of this report, under the third column from the right, the encumbrances. I'm going to have to get glasses to read the number, because I cannot read that over there. We still have about $137,000, $138,000 worth of open invoices. Those are things that happened in June. Services were completed, the supplies were received, that we are actually required to back into June, even though we may not get the invoice until July. So, this is not our final total. We're in very good shape. Our revenue is going to end ahead of our expense by a good little margin. But we'll bring those final numbers back to you for your, so you can review them once we have all our numbers in September. We'll also start beginning to bring next month FY '23. So, you'll see two of these reports next time, so it'll be two, we'll have two tabs for you on some of these reports. Our consolidation of funds, just scroll down just a little bit. This reflects revenues through the end of June and transfers through the month of May. On this, I'll remind you, too, each month we have to, once the month ends, there is a review process that takes between two and three weeks. All right, now, we do have people on vacations, too, so it's taking a little long to get that final transfer done. In the end, this will be a wash account. We'll have the same amount of revenues and same amount of expense, and it will zero out in the end. We have no debt, of course. Our capital outlay, we received SPOSS revenue for June that totaled $716,092.61, earned the interest of $1,645.50. Our expenditures for the month totaled $600,080.54, and our month-end SPOSS balance was $8,270,892.25. Just scroll just a tiny bit more. We'll get to the special revenue section. We've collected 87.57% of our budgeted revenue and expended 97.86% of our budget expenditures. Now, this one works the opposite way that the other funds do. We have to spend the money first, then ask for the revenue, so the expenditures will run ahead of the revenue. But again, in the end, they should almost zero out. School food is the only one, and SPOSS are the ones that don't totally zero out. Do y'all have any questions on that section? And there is our quarterly report. If you'll flip over to the school activities.
Was that on the same line?
No.
Separate page.
This one? Yes. This reflects all the activity, all the revenue. Scroll down just a little bit, so let's see that bottom quarter. There you go. The new portion is the April through June 2022 for each school. Their beginning balance, the revenues they receive, the expenditures and their final ending balance for year-end '22. And we are required to present this every quarter. So, do y'all have any questions on that report? And that's all I have.
Can I play some catch-up questions? I apologize for missing your last meeting.
Okay.
Do you have the text digest yet? I'm assuming not.
We do not. My last conversation with the rep from the county is, we hope to receive it the first week in August. It is, the timing is around the same as it was last year, but once we receive the digest, you know, there are some requirements we have to have. We have to have meetings, have a tentative millage rate, then we have to run that tentative millage rate in the newspaper for two weeks, then we can have another meeting. So, it's about a three-week process after we get the digest and do our calculations and, you know, bring tentative requests to you. So, it seems like it should be maybe the first week in August. It could be the first or second, was what I understood.
Did I miss, was there any change from the last budget meeting I was in till this last, I didn't, we moved forward with the tentative based on what we had talked about?
Yes, yes, we did not change anything.
And then my final question on, I think, is it SPOSS 15?
Oh, no, SPOSS 6 is the new one.
SPOSS, but what was the one prior?
Five.
SPOSS 5?
We are still paying for things in SPOSS 5. That's...
That was, what is the balance of SPOSS 5?
The total of 5 and 6 is the 8.2. I would have to give you the exact, I don't want to call the wrong, you know how I am about that. I don't like to call the wrong number.
Are we only expensing out SPOSS 5 until we get out of that and then we transition to 6?
Yes, we must spend all SPOSS 5 unless there is an item that was approved in the new referendum for 6 that was not approved in 5.
And they can't be combined?
No.
Yep.
I have to keep everything.
That's right. I was just curious where we were on the progression of using of all of SPOSS 5.
Rough numbers, we got between 5 and 6 million, because I'm not sure what checks we cut this week. The total was, we have, still have those construction projects underway, so I don't have each little total, but we've got, I believe, 5 to 6 million. And we haven't taken, we've taken in, I want to say the revenue for the new one, I think, is 3.2, 3.3-ish. So, keep in mind, we have money coming in, money going out at the same time, so it's a constantly changing creature. But the totals you see here are both of them combined. Now, if you want me to split them, I can.
That's okay. Thank you, ma'am.
But we are expending just 5 right now. We have nothing that was in 6 at the moment that was not in 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. On to operations and construction update. Mr. Young?
Good afternoon. I got, we went to two conferences last month, Mr. Wallace and I. He got his feet wet pretty quickly in what operations and transportation is, and I looked over at him a couple of times. He was like, "Okay." And he was making notes. I said, "It's not that bad. It's just a lot of new stuff to learn." He'll be, he's going to be a great asset. Maintenance is in a full sprint trying to finish these summer projects. We've painted some in every school, refinished floors, gym floors in most of the elementary schools. There's already done, the high school I'll do in the fall before the season starts. But we've epoxyed several bathrooms in all, in several schools. That's taken up the ceramic tile floor, put down an epoxy solid surface floor, placed some carpeted rooms with LVT flooring, worked on playgrounds and equipment at all the elementary schools and playground areas. We've helped Tate rearrange some rooms to use the space a little better for them. That's been a pretty major project to undertake, but I think it's going to help Stephanie out down there. She has some good ideas on that. That's just a sample of some of the things that go on this summer. You don't realize it. We're pressure washing sidewalks where, I mean, they've been out back driving them crazy all day today, but it looks so much better, doesn't it?
Yes.
I mean, it's just stuff you have to do to maintain the appearance of the place and keep our buildings, you know, looking good and in good shape. High school access facility is really moving along. Roof should be completed this week. It would have been completed sooner, but they sent the wrong clips, had reorder clips, and it took a little time to get them. But did slow them down. All interior walls are built, all exterior wall blocks done. Electrical plumbing progressed the whole time. Gas lines, water lines, they've got the ductwork, most all of it in and tested now. So, got a few pictures here. You see from that picture, the roof is probably three-quarters done or more, just a little end section down there not finished. All interior blocks done, all windows, doors and all that stuff are basically in, except for the very front part where the entrance will be. They're working on that now, link block. That's the entire, that's the interior of the showroom area. Bleachers will be over to the left for the, for that when you're viewing the competitions going on in there. Big, nice area. That's just looking back toward the, that's inside the lab area. At the very end, next to the fill house, that's inside the lab area where you're, where the teaching will be going on for different projects and things. It's just going to be immaculate. It's really beautiful. Transportation, they're very busy just to finish up routes, making sure we're trying to modify routes, trying to combine routes, trying to get down to less drivers. So, eventually someday, maybe we can start school at the same time and end school at the same time at every place. We're working hard to do that. Cut a few spots last year. Maybe we'll cut a few more this year and keep working toward that goal. Lot to be done before school starts in transportation. All the drivers have to have a physical this month. They have to pass a physical. We've got a few that haven't passed. We're going to have to go back and do some other things to see if they can pass. Very important that they pass their physicals. State safety meeting mandated by the state of Georgia, they'll go through training and safety training in, starting Monday. Be four days out. We're going to bring them in small groups, a little bit easier to do and a little better for them, too. And that's about it with transportation. Food service, we've got our, we've got our vendor worked out. We're going to be able to get food. We may not, our list of food was around 600 categories, 600 different items, and we're down to about 230 or 40 items we can get. That's just supply and demand problems. It's nothing, everybody's having the same problem. It's not Pickens County. The Congress did not extend the free meals for everybody, so we're going back to reintroduced and paid meals. So, we need our principals to help us, to ask these students and parents to please go online. We're going to do it online starting June, July the 18th. It'll go live online and they can fill out their application online. Don't have to do the paperwork. They can still get paperwork, paper pieces and bring them in and do it that way. But the quicker they do that, starting July the 18th, quicker we can get them approved or not approved. But most of them will get approved, probably. But I hate it. It's just the way it is. Our prices haven't changed. We left them the same this year. Elementary's a dollar fifty for lunch. All the schools are a dollar fifty for breakfast. Elementary's is 215 for lunch, middle's 240, junior highs 240, high schools 245. Baptist staff's 225 for breakfast, 375 for lunch, and visitors are 225 and 425. A reduced breakfast price is 30 cents. So, it's worth looking at this. And it's, it's free money. We just need to take advantage of it by people filling out these applications. And a reduced lunch price is 40 cents. So, it's really worth it to these people to try to do this. And, you know, we're serving the best food we can serve with the restrictions that are put on us by federal government. Question?
I was, I've been curious if the government cusses any slack on calories or the type of balance in meal.
Right now, just Beth in here, they're not giving us any breaks on the bill. Right now, the whole grain issue's still there, right?
The issue's still there. All they're doing is if we can't get something because of a supply issue, they'll give us a little grace on that.
Okay.
But our, the expectation is to follow the meal pattern and...
It is an audit year, too, Rhett.
And I was telling Stacy earlier today, I don't know if I can start with real biscuits or whole grain, and I have to make a decision by Wednesday what I want to do.
Real biscuits.
I have a suggestion on the, for what it's worth. We have some great partners in the media here, and I know we have a lot of concern about people filling out the forms after getting so accustomed to not. Maybe we could put a flyer or something together to get to them that they can put out to all their people. I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. We'll give some to Destiny.
We're also sending something.
Probably already.
Good, okay.
Well, we hadn't put it out yet because it's not...
Right, not ready for China.
You might have taken some of that.
I want to just add one thing as well. Also, I've just gotten confirmation from our software company that we can, I've got a QRL link for it as well, and I'm just going to put that on a flyer for the first day, go-home packets, because they can use a cell phone or smartphone to fill out the application. So, that should help make it more accessible to people.
Good. And, you know, in that way, it's more private. Nobody has to know if anybody's upset about that. So, it's just better for us to, it's better for the district, better for the kids. They get to eat. I mean, you know, that's what we're looking for.
Any update on the junior high greenhouse?
It's still to be delivered, I hope, next month. It's manufacturing, it's manufacturing problems. Yeah. It won't take them long. It's ready to get, it won't let take them long to finish it. It's just waiting on the delivery from the manufacturer, which is the greenhouse company out of South Carolina.
And have we, have we figured out yet, come up with a plan, facilities plan on the domino effect at the high school, talking fill houses, old fill house, current ag facility, all that, what may come in and not come in? Do we have a full plan on that yet?
We've got, I don't know if we have a full plan, but we do have a plan that Stacy's been working on to get that dealt with. He's already been talking to the architect about the current fill house and what it's going to take. They've put eyes on that building to see what it's going to take, so they're working on that. We've put eyes and made some plans for the existing ag facility in terms of what we're going to do with it. So, yeah, we, we're in the process of meeting with the, with the architects and talking about those plans. So, we're feeling, we've also met, we're feeling good about it, but we've also met, how many times now, Stacy, with the architects on the new fill house?
A little over four. Probably five times.
Five times on that. Those plans are coming together.
They're pretty well done.
We feel really good about that as well. So, we feel like we're in a good spot. But there are going to be a lot of, there are going to be a lot of pieces to that puzzle as we start shifting those around. But we've got a goat in charge of instruction there, so I've got, I've got confidence in him, but I think we're going to be fine.
It's time it's old.
I didn't say old goat. There have already been a lot of meetings going on about getting all that stuff lined up and making sure we're in surprise.
We have walked the building, we have had the architects in, and we have sat down and had talks, and it's, I'm actually, I'm going to go a step further than that. I'm putting an application in with the state this, this month to acquire money for remodeling the high school. We've got a lot of money sitting there from the state that we can use with our SPOSS money to do a major renovation, and it's due. That's Chad. It's wonderful. If we can get that done, the high school would be in a lot better shape. It's due. It's probably three or four years past.
They're going to bring a lot of money.
That's all new HPC, AC, all new lighting, all new, and that's LED lighting, and I'll have saved enough money to, you probably will, it's going to be, you just don't believe the difference in it. We are, I'm actually going to apply for that money, but it won't be available till '24. You know, they'll sell bonds next year, and then you got to wait a year. So, there's a process to get it, but that gives us time to have it planned, have it bid out, have it ready to go, and maybe even start a portion of it before that. Because that's another one of those things, you got to pay for it before you get it back.
Yeah, absolutely.
They're going to bring quite a bit of money to the table for us on that.
Yeah, I, I don't want to say out loud, but it's five to eight million dollars probably from the state.
Well, it sounds exciting.
Yes. That it, that entry?
Someone. All right, thank you.
And that will conclude superintendent reports. Madam Chair?
All right, thank you so much. Next item is our action items. The first one is the approval of personnel. So, I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green.
Second.
Mr. Smith made the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The vote is 5-0. Passed unanimously. The next item is the approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports that Ms. Smith presented?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The vote is 5-0. Thank you very much. The next item is approval of the 2022-2023 student code of conduct. Do I have a motion to approve the 2022-2023 student code of conduct as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Smith made the motion. I will second that motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The vote is 5-0. Next item is the approval of the FY '23 lease agreement with Mountain Education Charter High School. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '23 lease agreement with Mountain Education Charter High School as presented?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Second.
Mr. Smith, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Abstaining.
Okay. Mr. Holland is abstaining. The vote is 4-0 with one abstention. The next item is request for revision of policies JB and IEDA. Do I have a motion to approve the revisions of policy JB, which is student attendance, and policy IEDA, which is unstructured break time, as presented?
Some move.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Second.
And Mr. Smith makes the second. Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Could we have a brief description for public knowledge?
All right.
If Mr. Young had one, I'd put him on the spot.
Okay. That's further discussions.
Yep, we do. I had Destiny put some information together on, we've got, we've got actually four requests. Two of them are revisions to policies, as Madam Chair mentioned. Two of them are in response to new legislation. There will be others coming. Some of the, some of the deadlines on the new legislation require policies in place by January of 1. Some of them require it as we get started in the school year. So, we're getting kind of there again, dominoes are falling here. But I had Destiny put a little presentation to get a few guys that covers all four of these things. So, Destiny, if you would... So Destiny, if you would, please.
Okay, the two revision policies. The first one is policy JB, which is related to student attendance. This revision is requested as a result of the new code section that requires students to be counted present when they are participating in activities or programs sponsored by 4H. So students will not be counted absent at all, excuse or an excuse. They will be counted present when they are participating in 4H-related activities. The second policy, policy IEDA, which is unstructured break time. Code section twenty-two dash three twenty-three was revised to require each elementary school to provide recess for all students in kindergartens in grades one through five every school day, except on days when a student has had physical education or if reasonable circumstances such as bad weather or other scheduled events such as assemblies or emergencies impede recess.
Is our fifth grade at JMS getting recess currently, or would that mean you're not?
They do, and actually, just as a, as a side note, since fifth and sixth grade are in the same school, Mr. Thompson has provided recess for fifth and sixth grade on their schedule. So, that will, both grade, both of those grade levels will also be included. Those are the policy provisions. Next up, or the two new policies that we're bringing to you this month. The first one is policy JRB, which is the Parents' Bill of Rights. This is the result of the General Assembly's creation of a new code section twenty-two dash seven eighty-six. The General Assembly took already existing procedures in school systems and added a specific right to appeal the administrative decision in response to a parental complaint to the local Board of Education and then to the State Board. The Parents' Bill of Rights incorporates designated topics, some of which are currently handled through procedures and/or parent notices associated with other policies or program requirements. That is policy JRB. The second one is policy IKBB, which is divisive concepts complaint resolution process. This policy essentially requires the Board of Education, the superintendent, and each school to prohibit employees from discriminating against students or other employees based on race. The policy itself includes specific terminology related to the process along with the requirements for resolving a complaint. And that is all detailed in that policy specifically. And these policies will be posted to E-Board for public comment for a period of thirty days or until the next day or days. So, it will be available, followed with this meeting, for parents to actually review the policy for public.
Thank you, Destiny. And Madam Chair, I would also add that we get the language for those policies from the GSPA. So we followed their guidance, and we, we had those policies checked by our Board attorney as well, before bringing them to you guys.
Okay. That's very wise. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. You have any other questions, Mr. Green?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Holland, Mr. Gartrill, do you have any other questions or comments on this?
I'll have to, Chair.
Okay. All right. All right, that was our discussion. We've got our descriptions. All in favor approving these two policies as presented? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, vote is five-oh. These draft policy revisions will be placed out for public review until our next regular monthly board meeting. Draft policies may be viewed from the homepage of Pickens County Schools E-Board site. The next item on the agenda is request for new policies. Do I have a motion to place new policies JRB, Parent Bill of Rights, and IKBB, divisive concepts compliant resolution process out for public review until the next regular monthly board meeting? A request for final approval will be on the August eleventh, twenty-twenty-two regular board meeting agenda.
Salute.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Green has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the vote is five-oh. Passes unanimously. The next item is approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two called meeting and budget public hearing number one, which was at five PM? The June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting at six PM? And the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two called board meeting and budget public hearing number two, which was at four PM?
Salute.
Mr. Smith made that motion, and I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, vote is five-oh. Next item is approval of surplus. Harmony Elementary, Hill City Elementary, and Pickens High have requested approval of surplus materials that are unrepairable and or out of date. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus submitted from Pickens High as requested? I'll make.
Make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Smith made that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Green has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to question stuff, but there's too much there to question. The pile of talent, there was a hundred pages of surplus items on there.
I'll take you for it.
I may have to take you up on that Sunday. We'll go down to the warehouse.
Go on.
If you want to go through it item by item, I'm afraid you might have a few folks that'll be a little upset with you. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Green? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the vote is five-oh. Next item is public participation. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this, at this board meeting?
We have not, Chair.
All right. Next item is board comments. Mr. Holland, Mr. Gartrill?
I'll have to, Chair.
Okay. All right, no board comments. The next item is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Mr. Green seconded the motion. Do I, that was the second. Are there any further, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The vote is five-oh. We are adjourned at six thirty-nine PM.